Okay, it's seven P M. So why don't we get going? Uh, let me read the usual introduction as a preliminary matter. This is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And George Morris will not be with us tonight. In town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director? Well, Martha's muted at the moment, but I'll note for the record that she's here. Kristen Grubbs, the Assistant Town Planner, will not be with us tonight. Anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond. Steve Sawyer, G M two.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Steve and Gage Foley. Gage, you muted?
Yes, I am here, juggling two children, but I'm here.
All right, welcome. Uh, this September sixth, twenty twenty-three open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, which extends the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to H T T P colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S and entering meeting I D number eight, three, two, seven, one, four, nine, seven, one, four, one, three, zero, five, six, or by calling one, nine, two, nine, two, oh, five, six, zero, nine, nine, U S, New York, and entering the meeting I D number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom in the W W W dot T N C T V dot org and recording and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube Channel. Uh, meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. The business ground rules, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or if on your phone, star six to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds and or phones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Or any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Uh, there will be an opportunity for public comments and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of this Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function uh next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant, applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Uh, and finally note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So it's seven oh five and still a little too early to get into our public hearing. So let me turn to the agenda. Well, first out with liaison reports, but I'm going to skip over that until Martha, uh, for the select board until Martha's um able to rejoin us. Um, for the Z B A, uh, they actually had a meeting scheduled for tonight. Uh, it was a continued public hearing on Northern, uh, one thirty-four Northern Boulevard on Plum Island, but that uh has been, will be continued, I believe, until September fourteenth. Uh, so that's all I have for Z B A. Uh, Woody, do you have anything from Conservation?
Yes, Larry. Uh, Conservation met last night. They had some uh tree determination of tree removals at uh two different locations. And uh they had a public hearing. And the only thing that really pertain to us, I guess, not that it really did, but a certificate of compliance for uh Coleman Road for lot three and four. So that was about it and they they were found in compliance, so. Other than that, that was uh the Conservation Commissioner.
Okay, thanks, Woody.
They also had an interesting uh discussion on uh the Merrimack River at the end of the meeting about um the with the heavy rains we've had the summer and um to discharge into the Merrimack River, so. That was that was the meeting to wrap. Sorry about that, Larry.
Very good. Thanks, Woody. Uh, next item is M V P C and I guess we, Martha, are you back with us?
Yes, I'm back. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're on liaison reports. I skipped over select board and I was about to skip over M V P C. If there's anything you'd like to report.
Um, well, Select Board actually, um, at the last, at the meeting on the twenty-second, they did, the Select Board did approve um the Energy Reduction Plan for the Green Communities Application as well as a fuel efficient vehicle policy and uh voted to authorize M P P C to submit the Green Communities Application to the state. For this round, uh, the um application deadline actually was September, but apparently it's been moved to December. So, but we're we're pretty much there. Uh, the only other thing of potential interest is that they did also vote to um approve the um Community Choice Power Supply Program. So this is the the aggregation thing. Um, as far as M V P C is concerned, meeting wise, um, for the Commissioners, that starts up again on the twenty-first, and I think the planners' regular meetings will happen, start happening the week after that.
Okay, thanks, Martha. Anything else?
Uh, no, I have some other M V P C things to report on in the planner's report.
Okay, great. We will get to that. Um, next item on the agenda is the August twenty twenty-three um financial report, which I will read into the record. So the uh payroll warrants of the Planning Director and Assistant Planner were approved, um, P R twenty-four dash four for the pay period ending uh eight, twelve, twenty-three, and P R twenty-four dash five for the pay period ending eight, twenty-six, twenty-three. Uh, we also had Planning Board expense invoices which were approved by Verizon Wireless for the Planning Board iPad uh eight, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then from escrow accounts, uh, for uh all four from Joseph Sawak, our peer review engineer uh for Bittersweet Lane, um, uh, eight, fourteen, twenty-three, for sixty-eight Green Street, eight, fourteen, twenty-three, the three, Newbury Port Turnpike, eight, twenty-two, twenty-three, and for one thirty-six, uh, Main Street, that's the Borrego Solar, eight, twenty-three, twenty-three. So we still got a few more minutes. Martha, do you want to do your planner's report or we can take up the August sixteenth minutes? What's your preference?
Um, I can do the planner's report and I know, I apologize, the minutes went out late, so um I'm not sure everybody's had a chance to review those, but I can do the the Planning Director's Report.
Okay. You got enough time?
Sure. A few things on this. Um, I think I reported last time that there there were some stormwater runoff issues at sixty-eight Green Street onto the abutting property um at seventy Green Street and also at the end of the new roadway. We have received a plan from um Millennium Engineering addressing those. Uh, Kristen, Sam, and I have all taken a look at it and have a few questions, so we're trying to set up a meeting with uh T J Melvin from Millennium to to go over that and just make sure that all the issues actually seem to be addressed. Um, uh, several things regarding M V P C. Um, first of all, uh, the community engagement portion of the housing production plan is going to be starting shortly. Uh, they've, I think I might have mentioned they've engaged a community, um, the Consensus Building Institute to help with uh public engagement. They actually helped us with our um municipal vulnerability Plum Island project and and we're fabulous at doing that. And there's going to be a um a subregional meeting of about five communities in on August twelfth. This will be via Zoom. There will be some general information and then breakout groups um for each community. Uh, that's about all the information we have right now. There's going to be a planning meeting for that uh with the planners from all these communities next week. Um, and we should be able to report back after that um on the details. So I'll keep you posted, but this will be the first uh first and probably a series of public engagement uh meetings. The following one after that will be an in-person meeting for Newbury only. Uh, don't have a date or location for that yet, but again, I'll keep you posted. Uh, Kristen and I are continuing to work with um the community development folks at M V P C on the M B T A Communities. Zoning, uh, they've gone through using the compliance tool and looked at um the density that according to this tool is is uh is possible for each of the parcels that we've identified in different areas of town. So now it's a matter of kind of refining that and um probably narrowing it down. And once we've gone through that exercise, we'll be bringing that back to to the board for discussion. Um, the final thing with M V P C is I attended a meeting there today with their transportation folks on uh what they're calling Merrimack Valley Vision Zero. And this is a plan that's actually been uh funded through a grant from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill um with a target of reducing fatal and severe crashes in town. So this is a planning process that will be going through summer of next year and um there'll be a number of steps. This was really just the kickoff meeting today to kind of outline the whole process and um we'll be reporting back uh more on that too as we sort of identify people to get involved in the process. But it will be looking at intersections, streets, you know, multimodal, like bicycle, pedestrian, and all of these kinds of issues to really try to get systems set up um to to prevent those fatal and severe crashes. So, you know, ongoing, ongoing work with uh M V P C is um there's just, there's a lot going on. We also have a Commissioner's outing tomorrow, which is not a real meeting, but they're going to be taking us out on the Essex River to look at some of the projects that they've been doing out in the marsh.
Oh, that sounds great.
Yeah, and so it's going to be a hot day um to be, but uh should, it should be really interesting. I know that there's been a lot of work out there on frag mighties control and and uh other invasive species and stuff like that, so.
Sounds hot.
I think that's it.
Very good. Thanks, Martha. We got about one minute to go, so let me ask the board, has everyone had an opportunity to review the August sixteenth twenty twenty-three minutes?
I have not.
Okay, so we'll we'll hold that for the next meeting then.
Thanks.
Okay. And it's seven fifteen, so we can go into the public hearings. So the first public hearings, we have a concurrent public hearings continuance is for one seventy Orchard Street map, R twenty lot forty-three A. Owner and applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgares, care of Diane Yurkovich, continued from eight sixteen twenty-three. And there are two public hearings, a definitive subdivision plan uh application for Fields Way at one seventy Orchard Street. And also a common driveway um special permit application for a common driveway serving uh two lots on the proposed Fields Way subdivision at uh one seventy Orchard Street. Uh, now, we do have um requests for continuance of this to our September twentieth meeting at seven fifteen. And just by way of explanation, because this is the second time we've done this, um, the uh subdivision application uh requires a majority of the board, which is three out of uh five members. Uh, and the uh common driveway special permit requires a super majority, requires four affirmative votes. Unfortunately, in this case, because Mary was not a full-time member uh of the board and missed a couple of the uh hearings on this, she's not eligible to vote. And uh our fourth voting member, uh, George is not with us tonight, so only Peter, Woody and I um are eligible to vote on this. Although Mary, in future public hearings, you you certainly can participate in the discussion. Uh, I don't frankly, so the the developer has requested uh the September twentieth date. I don't know frankly if it's necessary, but I think it might be prudent to at least ask for motion among the uh members who are voting members who are present is to continue the public hearing until our September twentieth meeting at seven fifteen P M.
So moved.
Thank you, uh, Pete. Uh, Woody, would you care to second that?
Yes, second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we'll continue that until September twentieth at seven fifteen. Uh, so our next public hearing is seven Bittersweet Lane map, uh, U oh nine lot twenty-one B, common driveway special permit applicant, uh, David W Foley Senior and Nancy J Foley, applicant Gage Foley, continued from eight sixteen twenty-three. And uh again, um, uh, we only have, uh, well, we do have four uh voting members uh present for the for tonight. It's Mary and well, all four of the current members who are here are eligible to vote on this matter, although George Morris is not with us. Um, now, the applicant has submitted revised plan as a draft common driveway utility easement and easement plan. And today, uh, we also received a letter requesting that the board consider allowing the existing common driveway to remain at twelve feet um or be widened to uh fourteen foot max instead of the sixteen feet. Uh, we've received a second review letter from the board's peer review engineer, Joe Sawetka. Um, so Steve Sawyer or or uh Gage, um, I don't know how you want to proceed on this. I'm a little up in the ear. Uh, do you want to, uh, do you want to present your uh the plan that you submitted or do you want to talk about the letter requesting a a narrowing of the width?
Um, I guess probably maybe it's prudent, we just air out the letter prior to going through the plan, because the plan is the full width, or the width is discussed at the previous meeting. Um, so I don't know, uh, Gage, if he just um would like to just speak or just rehash the letter with the board and and um and let let him know um your position on this.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't know um what the board's response will be. I I I met with my family and talked a bit about this. To give a quick background, um, this property is shared with my other family members, including my grandfather, who's David Foley Senior on the plans, uh, who's been here for a long time with the intent that this was always going to be split up to three lots. Uh, after meeting with my family, we all thought uh might as well take a shot at submitting a letter and see if there was any uh any possibility. So I wrote something. I I apologize. I know getting it in earlier than today definitely would have been helpful for everyone to review it. I'm happy to read it if if that makes the most sense for um for for the purposes of this meeting before Steve gets into uh what would be, you know, the the next steps if if none of it's considered.
Yeah, actually, I should have asked the board members, have you all had an opportunity to see that letter?
I have, yes.
I, Larry, I did not. I did not get, see the email today.
Okay. Well, Gage, why don't you go ahead and read the letter into the record then?
Okay. Um, all right, so bear with me. I do have the the seven weeks.
That's all right.
I'm sleeping for now. Uh, dear members to uh of the Town of Newbury Planning Board, I hope the letter finds you well after the holiday weekend. I'm writing to respectfully request an exemption from the requirement to widen the driveway for a family property located at seven Bittersweet Lane in Newbury. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter and would like to address what I believe to be the pros and cons associated with this request. The pros, reduce environmental impact. One primary advantage of maintaining the existing driveway width is the reduction of the project's carbon footprint by using less petroleum-based asphalt. This aligns with the town's commitment to environmental sustainability and helps preserve our community's natural beauty. There's less tree removal. By maintaining the current driveway width, we can minimize unnecessary tree removal, preserving the character of the area. There are lower costs. Expanding the driveway increases the construction costs. By avoiding this expense, we can better allocate our resources to other essential aspects of the project. Preservation of the spirit of Newbury. Newbury has always been known for its natural, rural, and family-oriented atmosphere. By allowing our family to maintain the existing shared driveway, we would contribute to preserving the natural spirit of the town. Mid five, uh, minimal app impact on street flow. The widening of the shared driveway will result in the street appearing to widen at the end. Our current driveway has not posed any traffic or flow issues on Bittersweet Lane or the private drive. The cons that have been discussed, emergency vehicle access. The only potential concern that has been raised is the emergency vehicle access. However, we've consulted with the fire department and they have reviewed our driveway without concern. The stretch of shared driveway is positioned to ensure emergency vehicles can access all three homes safely and efficiently. It is important to note that there are numerous examples of of properties across town with similar driveway widths serving as precedent for our request, Green Street, Middle Road, Rolfs Lane, Hanover Street. Therefore, I request the planning board consider granting an exemption for the driveway widening requirement. If the property cannot be exempt from the requirement, we would ask that the board consider reducing the widening requirement for this project to two feet instead of four. This would further mitigate any potential emergency vehicle access concerns while still preserving the wooded feel of the road. We genuinely believe that this request is in the best interest of the family, the community, the environment, and the town. We are committed to upholding the values and the traditions of the Town of Newbury and hope the planning board will consider our request favorably. Thank you for any time and consideration.
Okay, thanks, Gage. Um, uh, you know, just to let you know, Martha and I had a lengthy conversation about this earlier today. And you know, speaking for myself, uh, you know, I think a lot of your points are well taken. Uh, the problem we have frankly is we're not sure if we can waive that sixteen-foot requirement. It's not a uh, it's not a planning board regulation and we routinely, you know, uh, waive our regulations in an appropriate case. It's actually a criteria that's in the bylaw itself. So Martha reached out to Town Council to get some advice on that uh and has not heard back. At least when we last spoke, I assume you still haven't heard anything, Martha?
No, I haven't.
And the the, by the way, the legal documents have also been um uh, uh, been sent to Town Council for review per the bylaw. Um, so it was my hope, well, let me turn to the board members first uh before we go on. Pete, any comments or any thoughts?
Yeah, well, I think we have to follow whatever the recommendation recommendation of the bylaw is. I think that's that's paramount and secondary, Martha, um. I know there's been comments made by fire that they're they're comfortable with that. Do they have oversight over common driveways? Can I? I'd like to ask Martha this question.
Um, the the letter that they they sent to us basically um said that they don't for one and two family homes. So. I think that was, I believe that was forwarded to the board early on. If you want, I can try to pull that up again. I can't remember if it was an email. Um.
So if that's the case, Larry, I think those two components direct us to that we have to have guidance from, and that that's going to be the the determining uh factor whether we follow our bylaw.
Yeah, I think I think we do need on this question, we need some input from Town Council and whatever comment the the fire department made, that that was on the assumption of a sixteen-foot wide driveway too. Um, Woody and I'm sorry, Pete, was that, do you have anything else?
That's it. Thanks very much, Larry.
Woody, you have any thoughts?
Um, no, it it'd be nice to hear from Town Council on the matter and uh other than that, I don't have any other comments at the time.
And Mary, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I I love the idea of the trees obviously staying and the environment. However, um, the rules are the rules and um and safety is safety and that's our job.
Okay. Uh, what I had hoped to do uh tonight was to go through the findings for the plan uh as the most recent plan as um as presented, so at least we could get over that. Um. But it's kind of up to you. I mean, if if you want to pursue the the idea of narrowing the width of the of the common driveway, we can wait and have this back again until we hear from Town Council or we can uh go forward with the findings on the assumption that it's the the driveway is going to stay at sixteen feet. Doesn't mean that we can't that can't change if we get something different from Town Council. But uh at least we can move it along, so it's, I'm going to turn to you and ask you your preference.
By you, do you mean me?
Either one of you.
Yeah, so I I guess one thing, one thing, Larry, I guess, even if 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 um council comes back and says that you do have the authority and wouldn't have to go for a variance, would would the board even, I guess, would the board consider it? Because that that's the question at hand, and I guess if the board wouldn't consider it, we'd just rather just, you know, just say, let's move forward. Um, with the plan at hand, I guess that's that's really the question at hand here.
So basically, you're looking for a straw poll.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pete?
I'd like to take a look at Steve's most recent plan.
Okay. And Woody?
The same, and I'm interested in what council has to say before I say yes and no.
Yeah, and Mary?
I agree with Pete and also just wonder um legally. Um, is this actionable? I hate to say that, but.
Is it what, Mary?
If if Gage, um, can you take legal action if you disagree with something that's been done um by the planning board um or the town? I'm not saying it's going to be done. I'm just curious as to whether or not somebody could dispute our decision.
Oh, sure, anybody can appeal it.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I shouldn't say anybody. It has to be someone with an interest, but they're standing.
Yeah, I agree with Pete, what Pete said.
Yeah, why don't we go forward um and at least get through the findings, because we're not going to complete this tonight anyway. And uh we can uh perhaps uh even think about start drafting a decision. And um by the time we come back, uh, we'll see you again, we should have something from Town Council. Okay. That seemed fair enough.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. If I if I can make one comment, Larry, before we we proceed, the only thing I'd like to note is that the the visit from the fire department was looking at the current driveway width. So I just want to clarify that it it was not with the assumption, hey, if this was widened, would it be accessible? The visit that we had from them was looking at the current width. And it's just that top section where they can get by on both sides with no concerns, and that is, that's what they told us. So I I just want.
Well, I I don't, I don't doubt you, uh, but it would, you know, it's not quite what we have in the record. Um, Mayor, uh, yeah, Martha, before we get into the findings, I see one hand raised, uh, Steve Mangione.
Uh, yeah, do you want to open it to public comment now?
I think so. Yeah, I think we can do that.
Or Larry, might I suggest that we take a look at Steve's most recent uh.
Before we get into public?
That'll be helpful, yeah.
All right, sure. If that's the preference of the board. Martha, maybe you can um, but yes, Steve, you want to pull your plan up?
Yeah, I can, I can pull it up quickly. All right, um, can everyone see the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So as you recall before, we widen, we widen the road on the north or the right side coming in with the pavement, and then we had the the stone drip edge for any uh for any runoff on the left edge. And there was concern about this large tree here. So in discussions with Gage. So in discussions with Gage, um, we decided, okay, let's just shift it. Shift all the, all the work to the left edge. So it just removes any work from the right edge. And, um, there was some concern also what happens on the, in the roadway. It's, um, there's a crown and then as you run down, it's super elevated that Joe had mentioned. So basically now this drip edge kick picks up all of the water. Um, cause any of the crowning, it would run down here and then, then, then over across the road. So the stone drip edge picks up, picks up the entire amount of water. There is a, uh, where is it? There is a, um, ten inch cedar that will need to be removed with this shift. So the cedar would be taken down to make way for the, uh, the widening. Um, and with that, I ended up shifting luckily, I guess. So what happened was once I got this realigned, I shifted the, um, alignment of the, uh, easement area to be centered on the roadway, uh, and then ship that off. And we now have the easement exhibit was submitted along with the easement documents, um, were both submitted, um, to the, to Martha, uh, last week. And, um, so I think that, that was basically it. We shifted it, shifted to the left and, uh, we still maintain the sixteen foot of pavement. And I think Peter, you were concerned about, you know, possibly whining more, but with this, we do still have this stone drip edge is easily mounted, driven over. And, um, the stone surface could be driven on. So you actually fall on temperatures in intensive purposes. You have eighteen feet. And also I think it's, you know, I, I, what I found is you can actually drive off the pavement onto the grass even when it's wet and the, it's the, 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 the sod and grass surfaces compact enough that you can drive on without the wheels sinking in, in, in the dirt and into the grass. So those are the changes, um, that we made and, uh, and that was, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Um, Pete, uh, do you have any questions for Steve?
So Steve, the, the crown would have to be changed on the driveway, am I understanding?
No, 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 there's no change in the crown.
Okay.
So, so right now there's a slight, there's a slight crown here. On the, at the very beginning, slightly, it's so subtle. I mean, I went out with this, with the smart level and it's like a half a percent to the right and probably one percent to the left. And then by the time you get to the midpoint, it's all super elevated in this, this direction. Uh, but there's a slight grade. It's, it's slightly graded and, um, you know, it would run around basically anything that's crowned this way. It would, um, it would just run down and across. So I actually I'll show you the. So as far as the the, um, widening. So you have the existing and you just key it in, widen everything on the left. You still have pitch to the left. Um, and the water ends up in the drip edge. And this would be the additional driving surface, which is you end up with eight inches or eight inches thickness of crushed stone, then with a more decorative four inch stone layer on the top with some filter fabric, uh, between the two. Uh, just crushed stones, not the most visually appearing appea- appealing surface for the drip edge. So this will look a lot nicer on the left edge.
Wonderful. And then we achieve basically, uh, eighteen, uh, with that, uh, two foot.
Yes, it would achieve, yeah. Of eighteen feet of, of drivable surface for sure.
Great. And a ten inch cedar comes down.
Yep.
Thanks so much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Uh, Woody, you have anything?
I don't have any questions other than a clarification. What, just for Steve, uh, what did you just say the top layer of stone is going to be?
It'd be a rounded, it'd be either some sort of rounded stone, like a, uh, probably like a one and a half, uh, one and a half inch rounded stone or
Like a wash stone, you mean?
Yeah, more of a wa- yeah, wash stone. Something looks a little, looks, it's something other than three quarter crushed, three quarter crushed is not y- you know, it's a gray. It's not, it's not a visually appearing surface, uh, surface to, to be looking at. So something that, something that Gage and the family would like to look at that would be permeable. Um, and a little more decorative and serve the, serve the same purpose of being, uh, you know, a stone surface to accept the water and to drive on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Mary, do you have anything?
I just want to know exactly what, uh, the fire department said in relation to this widening, this uh, abbreviated winding.
Yeah, I'm ga- Gage will have to, I was not there when the, when they, uh, visited the site.
Yeah. So Martha, do you think you can find that, uh, I think, was it an email you said?
Uh, it was. Let me see if I can find that.
And to clarify that there were two visits, uh, or sorry, there was a visit and then there was an email. And I believe the email basically stated that it wasn't in there in their, uh, jurisdiction, whatever the right word is. The visit itself, my grandfather, who lives up the hill to the right there, was the fire chief of Newbury. So he knows them personally and they came and visited and discussed it with him. Um, so he's done this, on this uh, common drive. And they told him that there weren't any issues with the way it was set up as is. And then I believe the email sent to the town basically stated that it wasn't in their jurisdiction. Or in their, uh, I don't, that's whatever the word is for the town, town planning.
Um, yeah, ba- yeah, basically they said that. I'm afraid I can't actually access it on my computer, Steve, while your screen's sharing.
Oh, they stopped. There we go.
Thank you. So the email that we received from, um, then chief, uh, Janvren was, um, I'll just read it. We checked with the state fire marshal's office a while ago regarding another common driveway in town. And we were told that we do not have anything in our codes that we are able to enforce due to the fact that it is a private driveway. This common driveway falls under the same circumstances as the other one. Therefore, the fire department is unable to require or enforce anything regarding this common driveway.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So that's, that's what we, that's what we have here.
Okay. All right. Anything else from any of the members before we open it to the public? No? Oh, Martha, do we have any, did we have any, uh, written comments?
Um, no, we've received no written comments.
Okay.
So we do, Steve has raised his hand.
All right. I think we can hear from him now.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Am I on? This is Steve Manjin.
Yes, you are. We can hear you.
This is Steve Manjin on Fourteenth Street and I was tuning in thinking something else might arise. But listening to this discussion, uh, one, I'm sympathetic to the desires of the current owners to do what they're doing. However, the bylaw is the bylaw and what's the point of having bylaws if we don't follow them? In addition, when we think about down the road, uh, the same family members may not be future family members or indeed may be from o- other parts of the community and they may have a problem with some of, uh, what is being proposed now, which is why I find myself going back to what's the bylaw and shouldn't we be following it? Well, in seeking out the opinions from, um, town council, I think we need to be sure to see what the question is in writing that's posed to town council. And what the response is from town council in writing. Uh, in my experience, there's a lot lost in translation. We're doing things with verbal back and forth. So again, though, I'm sympathetic to the, uh, desires of the current family members. I think we need to follow the, um, bylaws as they're written. Otherwise, we're going to be, uh, going down this road time after time after time. Um, and with that, I say, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve, for your input. Unless the board members have something else. Why, Martha, why don't we, uh, at least put the findings up? Now, again, I want to emphasize this is for the, uh, common driveway as proposed on the plan with the sixteen foot width. Can you, uh, put those findings up, Martha? And I think we can go through those fairly quickly.
Are you able to see those?
Yeah. So, uh, item number three, let me just, let me just read them through. And, uh, I let me get my own copy because I can't read the whole thing that's up there. And, uh, just ask the members, uh, as we go through them, if, if you have any concerns about any of the required findings. Once again, uh, for the, uh, sixteen foot, uh, with driveway. Here, bear with me. Here we go. So this is part, uh, D three, the common driveways, um, uh, special permit required the planning board to make the following findings relative to the common driveway special permit. A, the use requested is noted, uh, in the zoning bylaw as a special permit in the district for which the application is made. Anybody, anyone have any comments or concerns about that? Uh, all right, I'll move on. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Uh, any comments from the board members? All right, moving on. C, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Nothing? Okay. Uh, D, the requested use will not overload public water, drainage, sewer systems or any municipal systems to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting the health, safety and general welfare of the community. And you think, any comments? All right. E, uh, any special requirements, uh, for use, uh, as set forth are fulfilled. And lastly, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the immediate residents or the residents of the community. Um, so those are the, um, findings that we have to make. Uh, is any of the board members wish to make any comments on those findings? Uh, well, I, I have none either. So and once again, I want to emphasize we're talking about the sixteen foot driveway here. So Martha, let me turn to you. How, uh, would you think it's best to proceed at this point? Should we consider recognizing that we're going to have some input from town council on the width? Should we, uh, think about drafting a decision?
Um, I mean, we could certainly start, start to draft one. Obviously the, the final decision will be dependent on, on, uh, what guidance comes back from town council about this and the board will need to, to deliberate on that. But we could, you know, certainly put together an outline of the decision, um, and leave some of those kind of critical things about the width uh, to be determined.
Uh, Gage, let me ask you, when, when are you hoping to, to bury ground on the house? This year, next year?
Last year.
Last year?
Yeah, we've had a builder waiting for quite a while. Um, uh, as you guys know, interest rates have gone up and up. It's been since that has started, since we've been hoping to. Um, you know, it sounds unlikely. Uh, frankly, I'm also concerned that e- even if there were, uh, I don't know, the, the public comment also makes me concerned that even if you guys do get some sort of special allowance to do that, that that'll go back and forth too. Uh, I could be wrong, but maybe it doesn't make sense to go down that path and just kind of accept what's happening, uh, or what, what's required, excuse me. Um,
Yeah, the, the question really from the town council is whether or not this would require a variance and Steve alluded to that. Um, and, uh, then even if town council said we have the, uh, in, in town council says it doesn't require a variance, we have the authority to to waive this in some fashion. Um, we would still have to deliberate on whether it's the appropriate thing to do. You know, so, um, my suggestion is, um, uh, you know, we, we pick a date, ask Martha to, um, at we start to sketch out, uh, a decision on this, uh, uh, assuming, or as Martha said, we can leave the issue of the width aside for now. Uh, and, uh, uh, at least we can make, keep it moving forward for you. You know, rather, rather than, uh, get stuck. Pete, uh, you have any further thoughts on this?
I think that's a good recommendation, Larry.
Yeah. Woody, how about you?
No, it sounds good. And, uh, it would be nice to keep it moving for, uh, Gage as well. So.
Uh, and Mary?
Keep it rolling.
Okay. All right. I guess we have a plan then. Um, so Steve or Gage, anything further you wanted to add tonight? Or I ask for a motion to continue?
Um, I'm all set. So I guess probably I would think before, excuse me, before the next meeting, we'd have the review from town council on the, on the easement documents and easement exhibit. And then I guess the decision on that. And then we'll ha- also have a draft decision or, or a working decision to, to run through hopefully, you know, with the final to fall shortly thereafter.
Yeah, that's the plan. That's the
Okay, great.
And I'm sure we'll hear from town council before that.
Oh, yeah.
Although I, I guess I shouldn't speak for her schedule, but she's usually pretty good.
Yeah, she always is very good.
Uh, okay. Uh, any suggestions, Martha, for continuing states?
Um, no, I haven't looked at the calendar here. Um,
So our next meeting is the twentieth. Does that give you enough time? I think it's the twentieth.
It is the twentieth. Yeah.
Is that too optimistic or do you want to, want to go to the following meeting?
Um, yeah, and the follow, well, the following meeting, I will actually be out of town. Um, so, and we can, we can we can try to have the, you know, everything that can be drafted, drafted at that point, you know, we should be able guidance.
Good. In that case, would anyone care to make a motion to continue the public hearing until September twentieth at seven fifteen P M? Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Indeed, yes.
Uh, I vote yes as well. So thank you, everyone. And, uh, we'll see you on the twentieth and hopefully have some answers.
Okay. Thank you so much.
At least a document to review anyway.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Take care.
All right, um, I think that's everything.
I think it is.
Martha, anything further?
Not that I can think of.
We have no new business. We have no old business. So I guess, uh, we're in line for motion to adjourn.
Would you like a motion to adjourn, sir?
I, I, I would appreciate that very much.
Your habit.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Hearing none. Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So thank you all and, um, see you soon.
Thanks, buddy. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Night.